Welcome, everybody here. We will call this meeting to order. We'll have a roll call.
Appleby?
Here.
Brunner?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Gunderson?
Here.
Nudowski?
Here.
Rasmussen?
Here.
Just to let everybody know that this meeting and all meetings of this council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with the statutes. So the citizenry may be aware of the time, the place, and the agenda of this meeting. I will ask everyone to join us in the pledge of allegiance to the first thing. Do you look for a motion then to approve the agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments on the agenda?
Just a couple of quick ones on the advice of the city attorney. There's two resolutions on the TIPS district. TIPS, closing number three, establishing number six. There's a word we're waiting on from the Department of Revenue to make sure that that order is correct, that you do it on the same night and in that order yet. And Attorney Calley about half an hour ago got to me and said, "You might want to just pull that off because, just to be safe." We can still take it up next week, week after that, we're still good yet. But if you want to just pull those two off, I believe one is under plan commission, one's under new business. Take those off if you could, it'd be great.
Do you want to make a motion then to control them off? Would that, or amend your motion?
Yeah, I will amend my motion to remove eight Ds from the agenda for now, and also G1.
I'll second that.
Any other questions or comments on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried. And we will move on to, and look for a motion to approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on December fifteenth, and a special council meeting on January fifth, two thousand and fifteen.
Just a quick note, the January fifth are not in your packet, so it's just December fifteenth, that's all. I apologize on that one. We'll take those up at your next meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular common council meeting on December fifteenth.
Any comments, questions, or additions to that, the minutes? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion secured. And move on to citizens' appearance. We will start with Mr. Savoy, library rep.
Thank you. First of all, I apologize, I'm going to have to leave after my speech here. We did find out tonight that there will be two presentations here. I believe it is a single person that will do that. The one is a Mark Twain, a hundred years later, that will be on Sunday in the afternoon from three until four-thirty down here. The second one will be on Monday, it's the same person, and that's why we're adding them back-to-back. That will be from six-thirty to eight-thirty, and again, that will be down here. In the meantime, we are trying to get rid of these folks, and I know I've promised that to you now several times. We're running into dead ends because everybody suggests, "Call here, call there, we called there." Well, we would love to, but, or if you can do this. So right now, the way we have it set up, we have two inquiries. If the first one does not work out, the second one is that the honor society will work through volunteerism. I'll bring my truck, I'll load it up, and we're hauling it into Appleton, to the Appleton Library. They have space, and apparently they're welcome to take the books, so you're just hoping on that one. And then Patrick and I have talked a little bit in terms of the, what was that?
Sure, yep.
In terms of the ownership and/or the, who has what responsibility with the library. And our committee or our group is going to need that a couple of meetings so that we can get it put together and we can actually go with what there is. There apparently was some question that there is a state statute or not. If you don't have a copy, I'll make sure you have a copy of that.
Yeah.
But then we'll meet with you. And the other thing was that possibly, if necessary, that the library board meet with a representation from the city council and with Patrick and myself, and we then discuss who's responsible for what, who's with what. I have two bids in right now for the furnaces. I'm getting a little bit concerned because there's a major difference in the bidding in the sense that one says that our food system is going to work, and the other one says, "Uh-uh, your food system isn't going to work, it has to be PVC pipe straight out. It cannot go through and up through the roof because you have too many curvatures and what have you in there." So I have a third person coming in, hopefully this Thursday at eight o'clock, and we will, depending on which way that third person goes from there. But as I'm looking out, I already saw one of you shaking your head, "Yep, it isn't going to go through there." So I am leaning in that direction right now, that we're going to have to have some excavation someplace in order to put that in for the connection. But the two furnaces, we want to get on somebody's list so that as the weather turns nice, we can actually have them taken care of. They are not at the point of totally going out, but as I look in that room, I get more concerned each time I go in there. They're rusting out, they're showing their wear and tear, and I don't want to end up being here with a phone call that, "Oops, the furnaces are shut down." So we will be looking at it to replace those. Any questions?
I'll throw something on to clarify real quick. In working with Frank, he talks a little bit about the furnace for the, that heating system. One of the questions I had was on ownership of this building. And, you know, by state statute, you have a library board that's set up to do certain things. And as you guys know, you have a section in your budget where you contribute a certain amount of money, and then the library board gets to spend that money. But the question I had was, over the years, the city pays to insure the building. I don't know that we charge all of our insurance on workers' comp and those types of things to the library. So the question was, if it's time to replace a furnace, who's supposed to pay? Who owns the building? Nothing's really written down. And the problem with not writing things down is after a while, you get new people that come in and maybe don't know how things have gone in the past, so.
And that's exactly how the library board felt also, that it's time to put this in writing. So we know, you know, and everybody knows.
And we all save a headache and nobody's upset, and there you go.
Any other questions? If not, I apologize, but I am going through.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to citizens' appearances. Murphy, McFlair, and Ms. Rep.
Hey. I'm here and a member of the Fire Knights. Every year, we ask you guys for paid assistance and support to our event. For the past seven years, you guys have given us a lump sum of money to help us offset the costs that we incurred throughout the course of our event. Through donations, it's allowed us to help multiple groups, youth groups and organizations that can't individually make their own money. So they can come up by themselves and create money towards their own groups, so it's been a great thing. With your help, and since two thousand and seven, Fire Knights has raised for twenty-nine different organizations, all of which are youth-oriented. If you don't know how this works, any volunteer can come in, they get signed up, they get put on the program. All their hours gets dictated to whoever, whatever group they want to dictate their hours to. At the end, when we compile all the hours and the money that we profit off of, we disperse that out to the different groups for the amount, all the time they put into the organization. Since then, through all the donations, the sponsorship, the money received, raised, we've given back sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars to these groups and organizations. Basically, ten thousand dollars a year since we started this. It's been a great thing for us and thing for our community. This event is becoming extremely large, so as you've noticed, that requires a large amount of volunteers and donations. For example, this year, we're running two weekends rather than just one weekend. Also, the money has been hard to come by. Obviously, the economy dropping, donations been hard to get. Obviously, you guys go through the same thing in here, people come ask for money. And it's a hard, hard thing to deal with. So, once again, we're asking for your help. And I suppose you're wondering why the sponsorship from you guys would be worthwhile. And that is just the fact that during this time of year, February, there's not a lot going on in Waioa. There's not a lot of extra income coming in. And if you notice that weekend, there's a lot of people in town. The gas stations are low constantly. Some of ours and heating establishments have a lot more people in there than they normally have. So it's an extra income for them coming in throughout the city. So it just seems to be a really, really big thing that's happening. Also, I can't give you the exact dollars to what it brings in, but like I said, if you get out there and look, you'll see how much more, how many more people there are in the area. There's at least, in our big championship race, there's at least twelve more people sitting in our grandstands during this race, and that's not people we would normally have around here. So that is obviously getting some money coming in. So like I said, at this point, on behalf of Fire Knights, I would just like to say thank you for everything you have done for us at this point. I really appreciate it if you guys can help us out again with your donation. Last two years, I believe, it's been about seven hundred dollars for your donation that you've given us. That is basically, what they helped us with is the cost of the water and stuff like that. We put on track, created track. So like I said, I really appreciate it, like I said, I'm hoping that you can get your donation again.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
We have, yeah. Can I, or?
Okay, so.
What did I go to, finance?
Finance, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you want to refer. I just thought if somebody had a question about it before you. To a council meeting, or a committee meeting.
Actually, I have one more thing. I have a copy of this and some of the current elements for, do you guys want a copy of this? For your notes or anything?
Sure. If you have an extra copy, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll move that down to the finance meeting. Now, if you don't go to finance, Mark, if you want to come back for the finance meeting, welcome. Any other citizens' appearances? Dr. Meyer, do you have anything you want to say?
No, I'm just, I'm just here for the term.
Okay. It's just that the idea is there, and I just thought it would be something. Don Ostrander?
Just to clarify what you probably want to do, so we have the podium up, and if you want to speak about garbage and recycling, this would be the time for the public to speak. Then when the council takes it up, they may not open it back up for comment though. So if you have something you wanted to say, this would be the time now.
I'll just go down the list, and if you want to speak, we ask that you give your name and address. Don Ostrander?
One ten West Parker Street, Don Ostrander. On the garbage, I'll put, what I've read in the papers and all this stuff here on, between, was it Harders and Gration? My concern is, is Harders, the company, is trying to put you a one barrel out there and come along with the iron, pick one barrel up and dump it, and that's all the garbage service you're going to get? Or are they going to do it as Gration has done over the twenty years they've been here? You have a mountain out there and they're going to take it. If that's the case, I think if you let Gration go at this time, you're doing this city residents a very big bad injustice. Because you're going to have people paying ten dollars a loan and running up to the recycle center and all that stuff there. If you, you're going to be limited to one barrel with the iron, pick something, dump it, and that's all you're going to get. Just wanted to put my comments in. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, do you have experience?
Three of I need to discuss it. I got the same issue, Don, as this whole garbage thing. Forget the pun, that sounds like garbage to me. I mean, it was voted on the last time I was here, and for some reason, got changed. According to the paper, it was going to be on one Monday night, and apparently you had a meeting on Monday in between there. Very few people knew about it. And then if somebody changed their vote, which I am very concerned about, because why did that happen? There was not a public works meeting in between. So to me, it looks very fishy that somebody would change their vote, just overnight, wake up and say, "Hey, maybe I did something wrong here, I'll change my mind." This council is supposed to be honorable, and you vote on something, it should stick. And not, they come back later and say, "Well, I want to change my mind, can we try it again? It sounds like I didn't get my way, so let's do it over again." I agree with Don, the past twenty years here is very tough to beat Gration and sanitation. They do an excellent job. I know from when I was on the county, or on the council, excuse me, they went five-plus years. They never raised the rent, they raised the charges, never had fuel charges. I think it'd be a disgrace to the city to even think about changing. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Gates got a question, Mark.
Yeah, I'm about the same, repeating what they said. Down in December meeting, like, that it was a three-three from here, broke the tie. If you break the tie, we shouldn't even be arguing about this now. But like Gration, they've been here for twenty-some years, like they said. And he does, he's a businessman in town. He does a lot, like for Fair, Fair Year, and he's been helping Fair out tremendously for years. And like Dex says, I think you'd be doing a city a disgraced by not staying with Gration.
Thank you. Lynn, Lynn Gration, did you have anything on this thing?
I just wanted to leave my options open so I could say something. Patrick says, "I'm pretty much, right now is my time." I guess what I'd have to say would just probably, I appreciate what has been said behind me with people in Waioa. We've had twenty years, we have been very fugal with the raises, and I guess I wondered how much my hard work meant. But when I see this tonight, I really appreciate it that people come out and feel, we feel better even whatever happens, and they all come here, but I do appreciate that, so that's my summary. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you, boys, so yes, enough kids, that's it. Anybody else that I missed?
I'd like to just say something too.
Yeah, he was first of all, I'm sorry.
As the one gentleman behind me here had said, as far as putting out a can, that the bids were put in, as far as we're going to service the community the same way Gration does. So as a matter of fact, we put out the, you can put a quantity up of three yards of trash out there, which is more than what you're currently doing.
Okay. More citizens? Another citizen appearances. And we will move on to number six, veto session from January fifteenth, special city council meeting. Motion to enter into a contract with Harders Fox Valley for two years and city options for a third year, approved on a four-to-two vote by the council on January fifth, two thousand and fifteen, and vetoed by the mayor on oh-one-ten-fifteen. I guess I'm, I vetoed it because of the fact that I went back and spent several hours looking at all of our committee meetings, our regular meetings. From the start, it looked to me like, and listening to your comments at your committee meetings and listening to the regular meetings, some of the comments that I heard overall were like, "I really can't make a, I really can't make a recommendation on this because I don't have enough information," going back and forth. So it kind of made me wonder, is everybody actually making the right decision? Are they actually thinking about the people they represent? Or are they just doing this for some other reason? So I went through, and I went through, and Frank Savoy was at one of the meetings. He made, he made some comments in regards to the garbage pickup. And I realized it went back and forth. You might say, "Well, well, there wasn't a, we only had two quotes, and then the other quote came." But when you read the PDF that was in there, the PDF does state that the city has a right to reject any and all proposals, award it to the contract, and award the contract to the contractor who in the judgment of the city will best serve the interests of the city in selecting a contractor. The city will take into consideration fees, experience, qualifications, familiarity of the city, and the familiarity of the city's extended, extension program. And I don't believe that we did that, because as we heard, there's twenty years of experience. We don't have a problem with anybody. And then, we're talking about basically a three dollars and forty-eight cent difference. And we're billing out at thirteen dollars for garbage collection. So if the person is charging us now eleven-twenty-eight or eleven-forty-six, we're billing the customer thirteen dollars. So that extra money, I mean, people have asked me, "What are you doing with that extra money?" If I'm being billed thirteen dollars for garbage. So the reason I did it mainly was, the other thing was, is if we want to work with the community, we want people to shop in Waioa, we want people to buy local. I think it starts here, as leaders of this community. Otherwise, you know, I don't, I don't think we, we can say anything to people if they don't support our community. As we heard before, and I have it on here, that one vendor has apartments in this house, in this town, pays taxes in this town, gets fuel, they're in the, in the community, they support the community. I guess I don't know why, and I watched and listened to everybody's decisions, and there's one council person that really hasn't said anything, but, and I guess I have to ask her, is, Shiny, you haven't said anything but yet, you voted against it, and I have to ask, what was your reasoning for that?
Well, my reasoning was this, and it wasn't how everybody else voted about the second bid in with our Grations. I have no problems, I also did my homework. I went out in my community, in my ward, and I talked to people, and I had a fifty-fifty reaction. I didn't have like Joanna where everybody was happy with Grations. Myself, I have had some problems with Grations. When I have called, I've had some rude comments from the lady when I was trying to ask her questions. But then I've also had some good things with Gration too. When I was looking at this, I was going by the numbers. And when I was talking with the public works guys that were in charge, I asked them about the money. And they told me that the extra money could be utilized for our community to do extra things. And I thought, "Well, that would be great, we would be saving some money with our community, and we could offer different things." Now quote me if I'm wrong, if that wasn't what I heard from somebody out of Public Works, but that's what I had heard. And not that there's anything wrong with Grations. It's wonderful that you've served our community for twenty years, but then you guys got to remember too, we did that with our lawyer. We had a lawyer here that served us for how many years, and we changed because we needed to do something to help us out. And my feelings were, if we had extra money for our city, what could we offer that we don't have now? Could we offer beef pickup during the fall months so that people aren't trading it, and it's not in the gutters and our sewer, or not our sewer guy, our, um, street sweepers are having issues with that all out? So honestly, when I made my decision, it wasn't that the fact that they came in with a second bid. But then I also agreed with Scott, too. If you're sitting there as a city and you're letting everybody come in with a second bid on something, how does that make us look if we're just letting everybody do that? Are we going to do that for everything that we bid out? Are we going to let them after they find out how much lower their opponent is? Are we going to let them put in another bid after the fact? So those are my decision-making. My decision on the first vote was the fact that the city would be saving some money in a couple of years that we could offer some stuff for our community. And that's how I stayed through this whole thing. And I did agree with Scott on the whole thing. It's us as a city too, we're representing, we can't just let anybody think that they can come back with a second bid.
I don't think that we can really do that, because we issued that money as garbage pickup, so I think we have to utilize that money as garbage pickup, because it does.
Well, that's what I was told, so I didn't.
Because it is, it's stated on our bill, presidential bills, that the community is paying thirteen dollars. And I can tell you from in the past, it was ten, it was eleven, and it got moved up to the thirteen when we, when they did that, city containers. And they added on the extra cost to that, so then instead of having it with a real close to twelve, the committee at that time and the council would change it to thirteen. So that money was just here taped, basically for garbage collection.
Another thing that kind of concerned me is that, at the December meeting, it came out in the paper that it was three-three, and the mayor broke the tie. You voted not to take harder. So why are you even going through this here? That should have been aggression to start with. I, that, I don't know, I've been in enough organizations enough years that I haven't really heard of anything like that.
The other, the other thing I have is that.
Other than the mayor can't say nothing other than maybe break the tie and call meeting order.
We're, the other, the other thing that I took in and I got here is that we did spend, we've been working on this since, well, it started in the September meeting. So we've worked all the way back to that committee, that committee has going back and forth. So council people, your committee guys are getting paid to have that committee meeting. So we spent over, almost over three hundred dollars going back and forth on this through the committee meeting when we're talking about three dollars and forty-eight cents.
Well, I mean, that's true, that is one thing that's discussed at meetings.
Well, right.
So that really is not even.
Well, you had your meetings, yeah, it is, because every time you, every.
Those meetings are held monthly, Mike.
Right, but every.
So what you're saying is nonsensical.
What you, you shouldn't have to go in there and have, if you don't have the recommendation, then you need to get the information.
Let's, let's hold this up just a little bit.
So, so basically, it's.
As long as you brought this up, let's back this up just a little bit, okay?
When I'm done, when I'm done. So, so basically, we spent all these meetings and all this time for that, basically, is about three hundred dollars a year that we're talking of saving for garbage pickup. And like I said, so if you want to have the support of the community, and with all the people that have contacted me and said, "Don't change, we want to keep the same garbage collector that we have, and we've had it in the past." I don't know why, a lot of people don't understand that, yes, we have to do it because of the bits. And one of the things, Nick, at your October meeting, you did state that it's not the, it's not the system that is not working, it's just that we have to get the quotes to do that.
You're absolutely right, you're absolutely right.
So if the system's not broke, why do we want to fix it? What do we have to fix?
Thank you.
So if you'd like to say something?
Okay, I, I agree with one statement, are people doing this for some other reason? I actually questioned that myself, as to why some people are doing this. We have a policy that states we will bid out all services. We had a policy that states we will bid out all services. This one has not been bid out in years. So we took quotes. We also put the question on our citizen survey, asking the citizens when they would like to recycle pickup and if they'd like containers. Through the use of that, we determined that they wanted the same service they have now. Monthly recycling, same garbage pickup. We determined that they were not in favor of bids. That led us to two companies. You have one company that this price, another company that over two years is going to charge you a minimum of $11,338 more. $11,338 is not change. It's not pocket change. It might not be much to you, but I think the citizens would say $11,000 is fairly substantial among the money for exactly the same service, which is what they requested. The same service, which is what they're going to get, the same level of service. I don't see this. I listen to things. I listen to people say they have loyalty to their provider. I don't so much have the loyalty of the provider as I do the citizens of the city. It's their wealth that I'm looking out for. And if I can get them the same level of service, that is what I'm going to do.
Okay, I think, anybody else have anything they would like to add?
I would just like to nutshell something. And I think this is obvious, but I don't know that it's been brought out and stated in any of these discussions. I too looked over some of the videos and agendas and stuff from past meetings. And my feeling is, if you're voting for Harder, you're voting for the lower initial price take. If you're voting with Gration, it's because of his reputation of 20 years. Over the 20 years, what is his reputation with the city then? And I think that that's what you have to ask yourself. Excuse me, I can't help that. And to compare the garbage issue with the attorney issue, I believe is apples to oranges.
Well, that was like comparing a business with the garbage when the businesses have nothing to do with residential garbage either.
Correct, but here is why I say that about, and I'm not trying to pick on you, Shania, but here's why I say. Will you use the Mr. Work example? And this is why I'm bringing it back around. The needs of the city in today's world has changed unfortunately. So the scope of practice of law that Mr. Work could provide us was different. The needs of our garbage has not changed as evidenced by the citizens that have come to speak here tonight. And I'm not discrediting or discomplaining that you may have heard other opinions from people that I've heard. That's totally clear and valid. And I'm glad that you are, if you feel that that's really what the people are telling you, and I'm not saying that it's not, I'm glad you're voting your conscience with that. So I'm very glad to hear you explain yourself. So thank you for doing that. So Nick, if you want to, okay.
So I guess with my veto, unless anybody else has anything to say, I would, I would like for you guys to, I guess as Scott said in the last one, reconsider it. And I would like to reconsider that, that you could take the opportunity and reconsider it at this time because of what we kind of, what we have heard here tonight and from what I have said about the majority of the things that I saw on our video. And I asked anybody in the community to go on the city's website and if they have a computer and look at some of our meetings that are on there. They can see anything on there. Do you have any committee meetings, any kind of council meetings?
If you don't mind, I'll jump in real quick on the procedure then. So you had, I want to say was it December 15th was that meeting? That's the meeting where the motion was made to enter into an agreement with Harders, two years, the option of a third year. That was the three to three vote, which was broken. The tie was broken by the mayor. The mayor voted against. Now that didn't automatically put you on the road to a contract with Gration. All that that was, was a vote to not go with Harders on those terms.
Why wouldn't?
The moment, the, the reason why it wasn't is because the issue was then sent back to committee for the January Public Works meeting. In between there, there was a request for reconsideration. And the request for reconsideration can happen at any point until the council next meets, which typically would have been tonight, except we had a special committee meeting or a special council meeting for the assessor quotes which are out there. And that had been scheduled for January 5th. Now legally, with the reconsideration coming in, and even if it didn't come in, the reconsideration could have been made at that meeting. Reconsideration was asking to reconsider the topic. The vote to allow reconsideration was four to two, which then allows it to be brought right back on the table. This, pretty much the same discussion from the December meeting had come up, except the question was, well, why are we reconsidering? The vote there was four to two in favor of going with Harders. Or in favor of trying to get a contract with Harders on those terms. Then the mayor had issued the veto. And in order for the veto to stand or be overridden, there has to be a motion to override the veto. And then there has to be a two-thirds majority of the council that votes to override the veto. And what that means, because you have six here, technically you need four to pass something, and four would be two-thirds then. So if you have a motion to override the veto, and if there's four votes for it, it's overridden. The motion then stands to enter into an agreement with Harders for two years with the city option for a third year. And again, as we mentioned at the January 5th meeting, you do not have a contract in front of you. Now, the intent has been, and the RFP document that the mayor read off of before had listed out, it solicited quotes. And then it said that a vendor would be selected to enter into a contract or try to get a contract for it. And what's going to happen is Attorney Kelly then would review a draft from Harders. Or Gration, either one, we have a contract with Gration, so we know what to look at right away. But you would probably expect to receive a contract in the February meetings then, no matter who you go with. Is there any question on the procedure then? Basically, it's a motion to override. If it overrides, then the motion stands. If you do not have four votes to override, then we... The only thing on the agenda is the veto. So if this doesn't pass, it goes back to probably committee then because you don't have parrot selection on the agenda. Excuse me, on the agenda tonight. Does that make sense?
Oh.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to override the veto. Second your question.
Motion's been made and seconded to override the veto. Any other questions or comments? I will ask for a roll call.
Gunnarson?
Aye.
Edwards?
Nay.
Grassmanson?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Maduski?
Aye.
Runner?
Nay.
And we will move on. Number seven. Finance Committee.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to allow the city administrator to cash out up to two weeks of the 2014 vacation time.
I'll second it.
The city administrator to cash out two weeks of his 2014 vacation time. Any questions or comments?
Being the first topic after the debate. Real quick rundown, we talked about this in December, in closed session, and it's public knowledge now. But my wife and I had a second child coming and the question was, the baby was coming early, mid-December. I would really then be off. The baby came into 2015. I wasn't really sure at all. Using, carrying, the, I believe at the time, for one other employee, there was a motion made to allow a cash payment for vacation that had passed. On my end, I do have two weeks left. Talking to the committee, the committee recommended to allow me to cash out up to two weeks. And it had to do with how much time I was taking off for the baby. And I took two sick days and then worked at night. I mean, I marked on it as off the two sick days and then I took a vacation day. If you allow that, that would be good. If not.
If there's a motion and a second, any other questions or comments? The only comment that I will have is Finance Committee, you're looking at how to fix that problem? For a vacation problem, for payouts like this, that is on your agenda? All in favor for the city administrator to cash out his two weeks on 2014 vacation time? Seconded by Bercy and I?
Aye.
Approve? Carry. Thank you.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve checks 31091 through 3166, totaling $160,579.33 and the monthly financial statement.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions or comments on any of that, financial statements? Roll call.
Edwards?
Aye.
Grassmanson?
Aye.
Runner?
Aye.
Maduski?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Gunnarson?
Aye.
Carry with all eyes.
All right, anything else? No, thank you very much. Public Works Committee?
All right, yes, Public Works Committee, I'd like to make a motion approving authorization with Cedar Corp. For Lake Shore Drive infrastructure improvements, designs, bid, and construction services.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments regarding Cedar Corp's Lake Shore Drive infrastructure improvements?
Just a quick comment. We did talk about Lake Shore Drive. This is to authorize designing, bidding, and then construction management. Now what's going to happen is, again, co-op services. And where they have the subway, they're looking at or talking about a gas station. I realize that they've been talking about that for a number of years. And the committee had said, basically, they had a concern on designing an upgrade to Lake Shore Drive and an upgrade to the utilities. And what happens if the city spends the money and then nothing happens again? And the developer has been told that in his development agreement, which is 99% done, if you do not develop this, you're reimbursing the city. And they've agreed to that. The costs are, for designing and bidding, I have it here, it's $5,200, I believe, is the lump sum cost on that. Of course, they have it bookmarked and then when they need it, that's how that works. Okay, $5,200 for design and bid, and then for construction management then would be an hourly rate, depending on when Cedar Corp is here and when they have to send somebody over, it'd be between $9,800 and $11,200. There's a specific breakdown of what gets billed to the property owner there. Curb and gutter, utilities, those all get directly billed to the developer. And like I said, that's part of, if this doesn't go through, then the city is going to be made whole on the cost. So right now, the potential schedule is that this summer, there will be construction there. At this point, that's the plan. Later in the meeting here, they are asking for approval for signs. But they've had it for, so it's, you know. So, any other questions?
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, seconded by Bercy and I?
Aye.
Approve? That motion is true.
Make a motion for approval of Fairgram Safety Program Agreement for 2015.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments on the Fairgram Safety Program Agreement for 2015?
As part of our workers' comp insurance, they do offer, because we're with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance, and then our workers' comp is now covered by United Heartland. They have a lot of free resources. Basically, you could take advantage of their safety program and use their resources to manage it, administer it, well, administer it regardless. But developing, staying on top of updates and the law. There's a thought that at some point, we may be able to get away from paying Fairgram. Right now, that's the old Alpha Terra. We pay them, they stay up on all the updates, they handle all of our training, tracking. And the cost for the year is $2,075. With that, we know that everything's up to date and everything we need to keep updated is updated. This is for 2015. The discussion, we started at the committee to talk a little bit about, you know, moving forward. Could we get away from Fairgram and run it on our own? Now, the trade-off would be that it would be more time on our own staff. I'm not saying that that's a determining factor, but what you pay Alpha Terra, Fairgram, you pay them basically to carry it for you. So right now, the recommendation is to approve it for 2015 and then just know that we're looking into, can we take that in-house or how much can we take in-house? It's not going to be special.
Yeah, I think one of the thoughts that we considered was just that if we go ahead with the new city hall, we'd have to put extra burden on the staff at this time, but it's something that may option for the future. You know, what we have asked you, listen.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, seconded by Bercy and I?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve? Motion's carried.
And I'd like to make a motion for approval of a three-year agreement with the county highway department for snow removal service on East Anne Street, East Main Street, and South Mill Street for a total annual cost of $1,090.
Here's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
A quick comment. You might want to, you might ask yourself, why are we in the middle of January talking about snow removal? And it's been at the Public Works Committee probably for seven, eight months. We've discussed, it started with Alfred Street with the county. The county does roadwork. They do a lot of other things that we need. So we've talked to them about, you know, what can we do to help each other out? At the time, the discussion was on salt, maybe cooperative purchasing, we can get a better rate. And as we talked about salt, well, you talk about winter and why you need salt. And we talked about the methods that we use for snow plowing and snow removal. Right now, we know that the county comes in on X and F and 110, and they're always going to be doing those streets no matter what we do everywhere else. The other piece that we employ in our snow removal service is we contract, we actually, we don't contract. We have a approved rate listing with Fox Brothers. So basically, whenever we call them, there's no removal on the city streets. We have roughly 14 miles of streets. They will come and do what we ask them to do. And then the other piece is with the city equipment that we have. We have an F-350 with a plow, we have John Deere tractors. We do a little bit of plowing. The problem there is we haven't done a lot of our own where we can rely on our own staff. And because we don't have very big, big trucks, we'll always rely on other people. Knowing that the county is always going to be in town, no matter what we do, and also knowing that, quite frankly, the roads that the county takes care of are usually always the best-looking roads in town. We had asked, you know, is it possible to take a look at Anne Street? Because we know that the schools are there, and whenever we run out, we always hit that street first because it's the heaviest traveled outside of the county roads. And so we checked with the county and we said, well, we'd be interested if you're in town. Can you run down Anne Street, can you plow down, maybe do a little bit of salping? And what would that effort require? And the answer we had, knowing that... And the answer we had, knowing that we have fourteen miles of streets that we have to take care of, and we pay roughly sixty-some thousand dollars a year to keep those streets cleared, roughly, and I'm estimating both of those numbers, rounding them off, we end up paying about forty-five-hundred dollars a mile to keep snow off the road, forty-five-hundred dollars of our cost. The county came back to us and said, we would be interested in picking up a couple streets, knowing that they already have a certain amount of staffing and they already have certain amounts of miles that each driver has to go off of, you know, they're not looking at taking over the city at all. And I don't know that we really intended at Public Works that in the next three to five, six, seven years, we would be aiming that way, but knowing they'll be here, we just thought, well, what is your rate? And what they came back to us with was one thousand dollars a mile, flat rate for the whole year. And they'll come through with plow, salt, sand, whatever they do on X, F and 110, they will also do Anne. We also had talked a little bit about all of the churches in town. We have churches on X and F, we have the Catholic Church, which is on the end of East Main, in addition to a little bit of the business downtown. We also talked about the library, the doctor's office, the funeral home being a little bit on South Mill. What we came up was three options, East Anne is roughly point-six miles, East Main is roughly point-six miles, and South Mill is roughly point-seven miles. The idea would be, if the county's already a block, you know, they wouldn't go any more than maybe a block off of the regular route, and knowing that it's a thousand dollars a mile, quite honestly, we can't buy the salt that they would throw on the road for a thousand dollars a mile. Now, what it would turn into would be nineteen-hundred dollars for the year if you go with those three streets. We would still have twelve to thirteen other miles in town that we would have to clean up or Fox Brothers. Now, the goal is, we're still calling Fox Brothers on those things. The county would not clean out downtown for us, we still have to do that yet. And again, here we are, sort of in mid-January. Usually, when we're looking at salt purchases, we want to be looking in February, March for the next winter. With an idea like this, knowing that it's, you know, middle, end of January, the county is willing to do one point nine miles, pick that up for us, nineteen-hundred dollars a year. Now, the one thing they did suggest is that they usually ask for like a three or a five-year contract on that. This amount is pretty minimal for what they're looking at, but, you know, if you would add a little bit of a street later, they don't want, one year, they staff a certain way for you and then you take it away. Couple of questions, one is, is this something that you're willing to work into for the cost? And like I said, right now, we're paying forty-five-hundred dollars a mile and it looks a certain way, and they would charge you one thousand a mile and it looks a certain way. And then the other question would be, if you're interested in going with this, when would you like it to start? Next winter or this winter? And the county is willing to do either if you're interested in doing this. Everybody's got the map and everything in their computer, right? I mean, I've got a, I've got a quick map for the rundown, but it's basically East Anne, East Main and South Mill, so. I did hear, I'll let you know, I did get a call, somebody had asked, are you getting out of the snow removal businesses, are you getting rid of Fox Brothers that's case-in-all? I'll be honest with you, and I believe a lot of drivers in attendance, but I think there's times that we're already getting some of these streets picked up anyway. A little bit of salt thrown here or there where it's not on a county road, but it's still to our benefit, so, you know. It sounds like a pretty good deal and that's what I, I'll be honest with you, it shocked me a little bit when the rate came in, and I can straight up tell you that for the lawn assault, instead, we can't.
And this is guaranteed for every year for the three-year agreement?
Yes.
Okay. And then some writing?
Yep, that's, and you have a copy of the contract here, if you're interested in that. Now, if it's not working out, you know, I hate to say, if it's nineteen-hundred dollars for the whole year and you don't have to worry about it, if it's not working out, you know, I'm sure, you know, you know where to find the county, for sure. And like I said, you look at the roads that they do and if the, if the city can sort of put those out of sight, out of mind a little bit right away and just know that they're covered, that's kind of a safeguard that you have there, I mean, it's a good thing to look into.
The motion is seconded. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, signified by CNI?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Can I ask a quick question, which?
I think we'd like it to start tomorrow morning. Yeah. He's back.
Anything else, Public Works?
Oh, that's all, yeah.
Please play an ambulance?
Um, no action for council, thank you.
Thank you. Public property and relief, what is it?
No action for council, thank you.
Recreation?
No action for council.
Public property and purchase?
No action for council.
Fine commission? Look for a recommend, that's the only thing else. Look for a recommendation or a motion for the approval of a sign permit for Outagame County Service for a gas station sign, contingent on the gas station being built.
I'll second that.
I need a motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the sign permit for Outagame Co-op Services for gas station signs contingent on the gas station being built.
And I will second that.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the sign for the gas station, contingent on the gas station being built?
Yes, I mean, there's a condition that's put in there, obviously, that says, like we spoke about before, if, if it doesn't happen, the approval doesn't happen either. There's going to be two signs that they're asking for, one is a regular gas price sign that's thirty feet tall. It has advertising for the subway on it too, and it would be on the northeast corner, on the corner of Lake Shore Drive and West Main. The other sign that they had asked for is a one-hundred-and-five-foot-high sign, which back in 2011, they received a variance for. And I can tell you that we talked about this, the plan commission put the video online, there's my plug that I always put in, take a look at the videos online, but at that meeting, they did grant, the Board of Appeals granted a variance to allow for a one-hundred-and-five-foot-high sign that exceeds the thirty-foot height minimum, or maximum, I should say, and it also exceeds the amount of sign space you can put on. I believe the maximum is two-hundred square feet of signage. And the Board of Appeals, and it was a very quick meeting and there aren't a lot of notes on it, so how much was considered, I'm not sure, but that variance was granted for a sign that basically allows them to put up a one-hundred-and-five-foot-high sign. So, this permit would be for those two signs contingent on the gas station being built, which we already discussed, you know.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, signified by CNI?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next, I need a motion then to approve the certified survey map for seven-oh-one North Mill Street and seven-oh-five North Mill Street.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments in regards to the certified survey map, seven-oh-one and seven-oh-five North Mill Street?
This is probably step two of three on the move of Mitchell Automotive. The Mitchell Automotive building was its own parcel. The parking lot that they're looking to use was actually parts of two parcels that real estate builders had owned. The, this survey map would take two of real estate builders' parcels, split them, so that Randy Mitchell could have enough for parking lot, and then those two pieces would be combined with Randy Mitchell's initial parcel to create one. And the two that existed for real estate builders would also be combined to one. So, where it starts with three parcels on that block and you have a map there, it would then go down to two. Now, that's step two. Step three would be next month, then, the zoning and the conditional use for Mitchell's property need to be amended to allow to cover this new part property that he's bringing in, but we knew that ahead of time, though. So, we, you know, last month, we were talking about the conditional use, we already knew he's going to be building on a parking lot and he's going to have to buy it. But that's what that, this map does here, is it basically squares off Mitchell's property, seven-oh-one North Mill, and real estate builders turns into more of a squared property, seven-oh-five North Mill. Any questions?
Okay, all in favor, signified by CNI?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Move on to new business, approved temporary Class B retailer's license for fire on ice for February seventh through February sixteen.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signified by CNI?
Aye.
Okay. Plan number B, discussion possible action and contributions for ice, heat and network to finance. Okay, review application, operator's license for Emily First, Christmas? Kermit? Kermitsey? For Wilson's Brickhouse.
I'll second that.
Wilson's been made and seconded for operator's license at Wilson's Brickhouse. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signified by CNI?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. D, we're moving to next month, that's a resolution. I have nothing at this time. Administrator?
Just a real quick comment. Yep, no, I'll break that even. January fifth, we talked about the assessor quotes, there was a question on the city's notice of non-compliance with the respect to values on residential commercial. At that meeting, we talked about inviting the vendors to the next council meeting. In between there, we get some new information that the state may actually make a change in their valuations that might get us into compliance. We need to be within ten percent of the assessed value to fair market value. One year out of every five, you have to have everything in between ten percent. Now, our residential has been eleven percent higher than fair market value for every year, it's been an eleven percent. The state is making a change to the valuations that is probably going to bring us into compliance for this year, that'll get us to one-oh-six percent. The problem is, our commercial property was out of compliance last year too. You have to get one year where you get all of them in line, and the commercial may not be into compliance, but we'll know that in February. So, when we talked about a full revaluation of the properties, knowing that in 2017, the state will come and do a revaluation for you if you're not in compliance by then, we do have this year and next year yet to do this revaluation, which means that in March, April, if you find that we're not in compliance, you can still authorize one to go forward there. But what we're probably going to have at finance in February is, we'll have our current assessor come and explain the notices of non-compliance and get you a better idea of what the whole program is, what it does, why we might not be in compliance, why we would get into compliance. And then that way, it's, it's less of a sales pitch and more of a, here's your assessor, explain to you where you're at. Now, after that, we do have the quotes on the assessors that we could then pick up later in February, March, but that's the reason why it's not on here tonight and, was that three minutes? Or was that less than three minutes?
I said a time gap.
You say, I thought somebody, it looked like somebody might have been timing, but...
It's got to be insurance, yeah.
Could be.
Are you still moving forward with gathering information from vendors that?
Yes, yes, yep, yep.
And we'll move on then to number eleven. Police chief?
Just a quick update on December, we had a hundred and sixty-eight calls for service, twenty-one of those were traffic complaints, forty additional traffic stops, probably the most noted thing that happened in December, which happens every December, in the amount of welfare checks or mental health complaints that we have. We did seven transports in December. We also had the Rise Together group come to the high school, very well attended, all three sessions, very informative, very well received by everybody who was there, and some of you made, thanks for stopping by. And the only thing I'd like to add in addition to that, before you move on, is if we could not schedule the police committee meeting tonight, and I'll get a hold of all three members because the judge, municipal court judge wants to come and I don't have her calendar.
Oh, okay, great.
So, it'll be in February, but we might have to move it around depending on...
We can work out of them, Jerry.
Yeah, it'll be next couple of days.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. So, any gentleman for February?
Right, right now, we have finance scheduled for Monday, February second at 6:00 P.M. Public Works on Monday, February ninth at 6:00 P.M. And then council on February fifteenth at 6:30. Those are right now, the only ones that are set. I mean, this is going to be late. We need to order...
Yeah, it's quite by year. No, the only thing we've had was, we have been, we're with fire department on the skating rink, the weather hasn't been cooperating the best on it. What, what we should, you know...
I talked to Mr. Leftable, some stuff that comes to like the home every other week, maybe opening up Elton's High School during the week so that our kids can wear off some energy, because I don't know what anybody else, but we have two very high-energy kids that, more than just being outside, they need to be running, actually moves and everything else. So, again, it's that he just needs to be known to be at home.
But last night, there was an open gym.
We had the high school from six to eight, my two are past okay, six thirty, so.
So, that's working for you. Want to, you want to schedule one in February then? Because then that way, we could get, get our preliminary work done for the swimway school.
Yeah, we can say there might be something.
When do we usually, it's fine, whatever, or...
You can say recs are on Tuesday, but it won't, whatever you guys need.
Seven?
Okay, the Wednesday, please.
Well, Wednesday's, it's a Wednesday before council.
Wednesday, the eleventh.
February eleventh?
Well, I didn't...
Wednesday? Tendril, maybe, let's go from there.
Would you do what's a female stat and what I'm obviously, you have to work for him.
Yeah, I gotta talk to him anyway, something very similar to that same thing.
Okay, do we need public property meeting?
Uh, not this month, no. We just had one, we should be good.
And time?
We will probably need one, in addition, now, there's a chance we may need a special council meeting next, sometime in the next week or couple of weeks, depending on the schedule for these TIF districts, closing one, opening one. If it's possible to find a night for next week, that might be better, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, just in case.
Twenty-sixth of February.
So, it'd be twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, somewhere in there, and so just in case, in case, we need to have resolutions at set meetings. And if you'd rather that we play it by year, otherwise, I mean, if you guys have a date...
My year Tuesday would be about starting, I think, I don't know what I really have to point.
Lucky third chip next week's on, I mean, six thirty, we have to...
Like a Tuesday or Wednesday?
Once, two, three, four, five.
Okay, and I'll, we'll know by the, in the next couple of days here for sure whether we need it, but...
Bring him down.
Do we need a plan, Mr. Bill? If you want one, normally, if you had on that second Wednesday, you could do it the same... then as Rex.
For sure, we're going to have to have one, but when we do the zoning and conditional use, we have to look at that, and then we'd also look at whether we need to notice that again, and I think we do have to notice a hearing for those meetings. I mean, we've done it already, but because he's adding more property, I think we got to do it again. But we'll double-check on that.
Do you want to tentatively see if the other members can do it on the eleventh, then, or...
Yeah, maybe tentatively on the, the eleventh is what recreation we're thinking through.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I'll find out with the other members.
And just a reminder that we said after the first year, and I don't know how the rest of you guys want to do it, but, you know, we're getting meetings and meetings, and they're extending on them all further, so remember, we did talk about maybe having two council meetings a month, and try to cut back on having meetings, you know, every night in a week, because it does tie up a lot of time for the administrator, plus, I don't know about the rest of you, ties up, and you got to have a meeting two, three nights in a row, it doesn't make family time very good. So, it's something to think about. Okay? Then we can move into, well...
We have, so you got a close session notice to talk about ordinances regarding the railroad, and there is no update. I mean, we can wait till the next city council meeting. Talk about that.
I can talk about it if you want. I can talk about the railroad and trains and stuff.
Yeah, it's, it's not, yeah.
Is that, is there anything different?
Not yet.
Yeah, no, we, so, short, short story, we don't have to go to close session, because it's, it's good. Nothing's going to happen between now and next month, next month.
I asked for a motion then to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Quarter day.
It's right on what I predicted. I went to agenda, and I guessed exactly what I predicted.